Okay, the clerk tells us we're up and going online. So I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Edgefield County Council on April the 15th, 2025. Appreciate everybody coming out. I want to say both for you people, for people here and for the minutes. Tiffany Ireland, it looks like she's not here, but she really is. She's on the phone. You just can't see the phone right here. So Tiffany, would you please identify yourself so everyone will know you're on the phone here?
Yes, this is Tiffany Ireland, and I am here.
Okay. Thank you Tiffany. All right. So just for the record, she's participating in the meeting, and I'll be calling on her for all her votes, as we do when someone's on the phone. With that, we will begin with the invocation followed by the pledge. I'll be leading the invocation. If everyone will please stand. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with a gracious heart and a thankful heart for everything you do for us. And Lord, we know you are our protector, our guider, our salvation, and we thank you so much for everything and every blessing you bestow upon this county. Lord, please continue to bless this county, its citizens, and this council. As always, Lord, we ask for your wisdom and guidance on all the decision-making we have to do tonight. And Lord, we just thank you for being there for us for everything we need and for being our Lord and Savior. In your precious name, we pray. Amen. Please join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. All right, council, as far as the approval of the agenda, I have no recommendations. Does anybody have any change in the agenda we need to make? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? And let's see, Dr. Kenyon makes the motions. There's a second.
Second.
And Mr. Talbert seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
I vote in the affirmative.
Okay, Ms. Ireland votes in the affirmative. That means this motion passes unanimously. Next, council, is the approval of the minutes. We'll take them one at a time. First is the March 4th, 2025 intergovernmental meeting minutes. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motions. There's a second. And Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Ms. Ireland, what's your vote on the minutes?
I vote to approve.
And since she votes in the affirmative, that the motion passes unanimously. Next is the March 11th, 2025 budget workshop minutes. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the March 11th, 2025 budget workshop minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions. There's a second.
Second.
Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
I voted in the affirmative.
And with that vote, the March 11th, 2025 budget workshop minutes pass unanimously. Next is the comments from the public. I'll ask our clerk, did anyone sign up for the first session? Okay. So I'll close the public comments section, council, and we'll move to reports. Any questions or comments on the reports? Hearing none. We'll move to the consent agenda. Everybody can see the consent agenda there. Is there anything we need to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions. There's a second.
Second.
Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
I vote to approve.
And with that vote, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Next is our only public hearing of the night. It's public hearing on ordinance 2425006, an ordinance to amend Chapter 46, Article 4 of the Edgefield County Code of Ordinances regarding rehabilitated historic properties to transfer administrative authority from Preservation South Carolina Edgefield County Preservation Advisory Board to the Edgefield County Archives. This amendment streamlines oversight of the historic property rehabilitation by placing it under local administration through the Edgefield County Archives, allowing for more direct management of historic preservation efforts within the county. Is there anyone here to speak on this ordinance in the public hearing? Okay, council, hearing no one wanting to speak. The public hearing is now closed, and we will move on to old business. The first item of old business is consideration of approval of third reading of ordinance number 2425005, an ordinance to amend Chapter 24 Land Development of the Edgefield County Code of Ordinances to establish consistency with the recently adopted changes to the comprehensive plan to create a new zoning district classification, to provide for regulation of said district, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Since this is third reading, I'm going to assume that nothing has changed, but I'll ask the administrator, is anything new we need to consider?
There's no new information. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any comments or questions on this ordinance? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to give third reading to ordinance number 2425005?
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motions. There's a second. Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
I vote in the affirmative.
And with that vote, that motion passes unanimously. Number two under old business, I won't reread. It is the same title I just read for the public hearing. So this is second reading of that ordinance, which is 2425006. I'll ask the administrator, is there anything new we need to know about this ordinance?
There's no new information. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions or comments on this ordinance? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to give second reading to ordinance number 2425006? Dr. Kenyon makes the motions. There's a second.
Second.
And Mr. Talbert seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
I vote yes.
All right. And with that affirmative vote, this ordinance' second reading passes unanimously. Next is new business, and the first item is consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance 2425008, an ordinance authorizing and approving one, an enlargement of the joint county industrial business park created by that certain agreement for development of a joint county industrial and business park dated as of December 31, 1996, as amended, between Aiken County, South Carolina, and Edgefield County, South Carolina, and other matters related thereto. I'll ask the administrator for some details, please.
So this ordinance simply allows other properties that belong to Kimberly-Clark Corporation, a corporation that is already in an existing multi-county industrial park. These parcels would be included in that existing park. Of course, this is in Aiken County, but Edgefield County does benefit by receiving 1% of the tax income. That's all. Thank you.
And there is no cost to us, as always, and this is a positive for Edgefield County to do.
It is only a positive. We receive revenue. There's no cost involved whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from council, please? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to give first reading to ordinance number 2425008?
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motion. I'll go ahead and second it. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
Affirmative.
And with her affirmative vote, that motion passes unanimously. Next, under number two of new business, consideration of approval of resolution number 24250005, Fair Housing Resolution. This is a standard resolution we do every year, but I'll ask the administrator for any comment he needs to make on this one.
So this annual resolution simply reaffirms the county's commitment to the rejection of discrimination in the rental sales or provision of housing services within the county.
Okay. Questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 24250005?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions. There's a second.
Second.
Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
I approve.
And with that affirmative vote, that motion passes unanimously. Next is number three under new business, consideration of approval to order two ambulances at a cost of $361,175 each from Emergency Transportation Associates LLC. With delivery, the maximum total cost would be $722,350 in total for the two units. A purchase order of $190,000 will be due at the time of order with a balance of $532,350 due at completion. We also have the option of ordering the chassis ourselves. The estimated delivery time is three years. I'll ask the administrator for some details on this one, please.
So we solicited and ultimately received bids for two new ambulances. We had three bidders, only one of which completely met specifications. The vendor with the low bid failed to meet specifications across the board. We recommend going with Emergency Transportation Associates, and we believe that we will be able to ultimately save about $12,000 to $15,000, and that is buying the actual cabin chassis, the truck cab with the body through South Carolina State Contract, and providing that to the manufacturer, and that is allowed. But these ambulances would be paid for through the EMS Special Revenue Fund.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve ordering two ambulances at the cost presented from the vendor that has been identified?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions. There's a second. I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
I approve.
And with that affirmative vote, the motion passes unanimously. Next is number four under new business. This is consideration of approval to award the contract to RG Novello for county building improvements, including the agriculture extension, NRCS Library and Magistrates Building in the amount of $75,980, and to award the contract to Gore Construction for improvements to the courthouse annex in the amount of $55,000. Again, I'll ask the administrator if he'll walk us through this one, please.
So if counsel will recall that we voted to approve $250,000 for the improvement of county buildings, that was during the last council meeting. When the bids came back, one contractor was lower on the annex, that is Gore Construction, and RG Novello was the low bid for the other buildings. Neither contractor had any objections to splitting this project up, and because of that, that will save the county about $8,000 by splitting the award here. They are both local companies, and they both do good work. That's all.
Okay. Questions or comments from council?
My question would be, have we ever used Gore Construction? I know you said okay.
They did much of the work on Bettis Park, including the new bathroom buildings, the scorekeeper's building at the football field. They did great work.
And Scout.
Boy Scout renovations, yeah.
Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to award these contracts to these identified vendors?
So moved.
Mr. Moody makes the motions. There's a second. And Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And Ms. Ireland, what is your vote?
I vote yes.
And with that vote, the motion passes unanimously. Next, council, is number five under new business, consideration of approval to award the contract to RG Novello for the electrical wiring of the two law enforcement center utility buildings adjacent to the animal care and control facility. Again, I'll call on our administrator for some details, please.
So this bid is for wiring the two law enforcement accessory buildings that were built by Yarborough Construction. They're a pole building company, so they just provided the shell. These two buildings are adjacent to the animal control facility. RG Novello is a local contractor. They're headquartered about a half mile from these buildings, and this will be paid from the plutonium settlement funds that are designated for use on the LEC site. That's all.
Okay. Questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve awarding this contract as it has been presented?
So moved.
Mr. Talbert makes the motions. There's a second.
Second.
And Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
I agree as well.
And with that affirmative vote, the motion passes unanimously. Excuse me. Number six under new business, consideration of approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Edgefield County and the town of Edgefield whereby Edgefield County will provide flood zone determinations, plan review, county building services, and record keeping. Again, I'll ask the administrator to walk us through this one, please.
Our building and planning office already performs these functions for the town of Edgefield per approval by council several months ago. This MOU, or memorandum of understanding, simply formalizes that process. Thank you.
And my question would be, is there any additional cost or anything? We're already doing it, so I mean, any additional cost? This is just approving what we're kind of already doing?
That's correct. We would collect the fees for services, so we would actually receive funds for that and then expend time for those fees.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve this intergovernmental agreement between Edgefield County and the town of Edgefield?
So moved.
Mr. Talbert makes the motion, and I'll be happy to second it. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
I approve as well.
And with that affirmative vote, the motion passes unanimously. Next is number seven under new business, consideration of approval authorizing the county administrator to provide a letter of support to the National Fire Safety Council supporting fire safety for the children of Edgefield County. Again, it's something we do every year, but I'll ask the administrator for his comment on this one.
This is simply an annual program. Again, we've done it every year, that supplies fire safety educational materials for local schools, and the county always adds credibility by endorsing this program. That's all.
Okay. Questions or comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to give approval to authorize the county administrator to provide this letter? Dr. Kenyon makes the motion. There's a second.
Second.
And Mr. Talbert seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? Ms. Ireland, what's your vote?
I approve as well.
And with that affirmative vote, the motion passes unanimously. Next, under new business, is number eight, consideration of approval of the first reading of ordinance number 2425007, an ordinance providing for the FY 2526 General Operating Budget and establishing ancillary budgets for E911 Administration, Economic Development, Solid Waste Disposal, Victims Bill of Rights, Emergency Medical Services, Road Maintenance, Tri-County Solicitor, Assistant Solicitor, School Resource Officer 1 through 9, Event Security, Sheriff Discretionary Funds, Clerk of Court Discretionary Funds, Pre-Trial Intervention Intention, and Criminal Domestic Violence. Counsel, we all know that in March, we had a budget workshop, and we went through this budget in detail in terms of both hearing from the administrator and going page by page in the budget, and hearing from elected officials and department heads during that meeting of anything they needed to tell us about the budget. So with that, we're with up to first reading. I'll ask the administrator, and I mentioned this in the budget workshop, that because some citizens don't pay attention to the budget workshop, we'd ask the administrator on first reading to go through the same details he gave us at the budget workshop so that everybody will hear the details of the budget, and then we'll discuss whatever we want to discuss about it. So I'll turn it over to the administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start by reading the budget memo. There are a few small changes from the time of the budget workshop, and I will make sure to highlight those. So over the past three years, the county has experienced strong residential growth. While this has resulted in additional revenues for the county, growth brings increased needs for services. With this budget, the county will meet the ongoing needs of the citizens while ensuring fiscal stability. The Edgefield County employees are our most important asset. Last year, we gave them a 5% raise in covered individual employee health insurance premiums. The annualized consumer price index, which is a measure of inflation, through June 2025 in the southern region was, through January 2025, sorry, in the southern region was 2.8%. A little over two years ago, we set a goal to increase employee cost of living wages at a rate higher than the CPI to consistently close the wage gap with surrounding counties. The implementation of a step program and merit increases beyond the cost of living adjustment would ensure that more experienced and high-performing employees received additional compensation. We have included a minimum 3.5% cost of living increase in this year's budget, an average of 1/2% merit increase, that is a range of 0% to 1% based on performance appraisal for eligible employees, and a 2.5% step increase for the employees that are under the midpoint of their pay grade. We propose to continue the 401K match with a proposed match of up to $1,200 per participating employee. Competition remains high for qualified employees. Our employees are again a major focus of this budget. An additional priority is public safety and quality of life. We are proposing to fund one additional employee in the sheriff's office and one in recreation. Based on the audited reserves, as of June 30th, 2024, the general fund has a balance of $7,698,698 of unrestricted reserves. In fiscal year 2025, 2026, the council will designate $713,859 from the fund balance. Our general fund operating budget for this year is $16,973,794. After utilizing the $713,859 from our reserves, the county will have $6,984,839. This is 4.9 months of unrestricted reserves available, which is a good cushion for the county. Remember by ordinance, we must have at least four months. Major highlights in this year's budget, a 3.5% cost of living increase. The proposed cost of living increase will be applied to individual salaries and salary bands. That means the hiring ban for an employee will move as well as the individual employee pay. A 1/2% merit pay increase based on employee evaluations. This was initiated last year, and it was a very effective program in my view. Continuation of a 2.5% eight-year step program. The difference between the minimum of a salary band of a grade and the midpoint is 20%. By giving a 2.5% increase calculated on the minimum, each year over eight years, an employee hired at the minimum would reach midpoint in eight years. And again, that midpoint would continue to climb itself based on cost of living adjustments. Step increases would cease once the employee reaches midpoint. Cost of living adjustments and merit increases do not cease at midpoint. Continuation of an employer match on 401K at 50% of each dollar contributed by the employee. The employer match this fiscal year may not exceed $1,200. The match amount will be revisited for each budget cycle. Continued coverage of the individual health insurance premiums for employees. Last year, the county's portion of health insurance premiums increased 11% and retirement 1%. This year's insurance is proposed to increase 7.5%, but final numbers will not be available until this budget is closed, probably August 2025. The creation of two full-time positions in the general fund. Funding for the eventual hire of eight full-time positions in EMS. Establishment of funding for a new EMS headquarters that will also house emergency management and the emergency operations center. Most departments requested increases in travel and training budgets. This is due to an increase in the cost of courses, an increase in the IRS mileage reimbursement, and an increase in the GSA per diem rate, which is what we base our per diem on. A 12.5 mil increase to the EMS Special Revenue Fund to fund EMS operations. A 3.75 mil increase to debt service to pay for the construction of an EMS headquarters and renovation of a substation. As we go through the departments, I will speak to any changes that were requested. County council, there were no significant changes. Administration, there were no significant changes. Building and planning requested an increase in the training budget. The clerk of court, the clerk of court requested $15,000 for modification of the family court for safety. A request was also made for an increase of $4,000 in the printing budget to provide reprints of historical documents and original publications. This is for the archives office. A revenue line has been added for sales. We would recommend approval of this request. The coroner's office requested an increase in pay for both assistant coroners of $1,250 to be implemented prior to the cost of living adjustments based on increased workload and a small increase in administrative costs. We agree. The veterans office requested a small increase in the training budget. We agree. Information technology. There are no significant changes other than a 5% salary increase upon completion of mandatory training that was part of the original employment agreement with our IT specialist. The magistrate's office. The magistrate's office will have a reduction in salaries upon the retirement of part-time magistrate Judge Mosley, which comes near the end of June of this year. In probate, there were no significant changes. In voter registration, increases in travel and training were requested, and an increase of $2,000 for the maintenance and service contract for voting machines. We agree. GIS, an increase in the travel training budget was requested. The assessors office, the assessors office did not request significant changes. They did receive a substantial increase last year to set the stage for reassessment, which they still benefit from. The tax collector. There were no significant changes on the expense side, but the tax collector requests a 20% increase in delinquent notice fees to bring us in line with neighboring counties. This would be credited to the revenue side. We agree. The treasurer. The treasurer requested an increase in the training budget and $4,000 for a money counter, printer, and two scanners. We agree. The auditor did not request significant changes. For countywide, which is our catch-all budget, group insurance will increase from approximately $1,123,750 to about $1.3 million. This is due to the addition of two new employees and an anticipated 7.5% increase in employer premiums. We propose $20,000 for internships for several county offices, five in the fall and five in the spring. These would include animal control, EMS, recreation. The treasurer requested an intern, and I think the building department requested an Emergency management. Funding for firefighter training continues in the emergency management budget but is reduced from $25,000 to $10,000. This simply fits what we've been spending the last couple of years. The sheriff. The sheriff's office is requesting a desk officer for the new law enforcement center. We recommend this addition for front office security, court security, and customer service. The sheriff requests increases in fuel and auto repair, which we support. Automotive equipment has again been removed from this year's budget and will instead be funded with remaining plutonium funds. This will help overcome uncertainties in youth facility operation costs by reducing the burden in the general fund. We are currently in discussion with Edgefield County School District over the funding for four of our SRO positions and hope to have that worked out prior to second. four of our SRO positions and hope to have that worked out prior to second reading. It is possible that we will revise our request from a desk officer and instead apply those funds to an SRO, but that remains to be seen after we get back with the Edgefield County School District. Detention center. The sheriff did not request significant changes. Of course, there are changes to the building budget, the utilities, things of that nature, and we made those increases. Animal control. The sheriff did not request significant changes. County maintenance. One new pressure washer at a cost of $1,300 is requested, and we agree. Recreation. Recreation is requesting one additional full-time employee. This will allow the presence of an employee at every game. This is important due to the increase in negative interactions between parents, coaches, officials, and opposing teams. We have added pickleball, yoga, and are in discussion to add martial arts. Actually, I learned today that we will be hosting martial arts classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Scout Hut. And we have the opportunity to partner with Clemson Extension to grow 4H in the county. We are partnering with them on 4H camps this summer. The new star park is in the design permitting phase and should go out for bid this summer. We will have access to the land and water conservation fund grants in October. Recreation funding has increased substantially through fundraisers, donations, sponsorships, and I forgot to add last time, by participation. We have so many more kids participating in our recreation programs now. Roads and bridges. Funding for a pickup truck and an asphalt roller that is a used but on state contract asphalt roller included. Economic development. We are continuing our payment to the economic development partnership, $80,000 this year. The industrial park special revenue fund had a balance of $515,039 at the end of January. Emergency medical services. The EMS fund has seen a drop in its reserve balance in recent years. We did increase funding by one mil last year and 1.3 mils the year before, and this has helped. The EMS fund was negative by $162,000 at the end of February. That's up from, I believe, $78,000 at the end of January. Based on call volumes, we need to add a fourth ambulance. To add a fourth ambulance 24 hours, we will need additional space and eight new employees. There is also not an ambulance and equipment line in the operations budget, so the current special revenue fund budget does not have a line for equipment. At this time, additional funding will be required from a millage increase of approximately 12.5 mils for operations to the EMS special revenue fund and 3.75 mils to debt service for the construction of a third station. We are actively seeking alternative funding to replace the need for the 3.75 mils. We've recently received some bad news, and we are exploring opportunities for grants at this time, but must prepare in case those efforts to achieve that money elsewhere fails. We agree with the EMS budget as submitted. The total millage increase inclusive of personnel, operations, equipment, ambulances, and a new headquarters is 16.25 mils. Again, that is 12.5 to the EMS special revenue fund, 3.75 mils to debt service. Solid waste. The solid waste fund is relatively stable. It continues to decline our balance. There is a 3.9% increase in payments to the tri-county solid waste authority this upcoming year from $819,000 to $851,700, primarily due to equipment cost and the poor recycling market. The budget includes a 3.5% increase in pay for convenience center employees. They typically would like to match the county employee cost of living rate, and we recommend that. The solid waste fund is beginning to just about break even. This indicates that a fee increase may be needed on the horizon, possibly two to three years from now. Victims' Bill of Rights. The Victims' Bill of Rights Fund provides for sheriff's office assistance to those who are victims and their families. A portion of the fines and forfeitures are returned to the county to fund this budget. However, in recent years, the funding has not adequately supported this position. We will need to transfer $62,342 from the general fund to the Victims' Bill of Rights Fund. Piedmont Technical College. Last year, we increased our payment to Piedmont Tech to $90,000. This year, we recommend holding our payment to $90,000. Their request was $232,869. The ABBE library did not request an increase this year, but do recall, we are replacing the carpet and upgrading the exterior canopy in a few weeks, the item you voted on just a few minutes ago. Under miscellaneous, we recommend continuing to fund the following items. The Beckman Center at $2,000. The senior center at $3,000. Clemson Extension, $900 and $1,400 designated to 4H. And the Upper Savannah Council of Governments at $19,325. The tri-county public defender has requested that Edgefield County contribute $24,431 towards a part-time investigator. We agree. Their request was in the neighborhood of $50,000 some odd thousand dollars. That was split among the three counties, Edgefield, Saluda, and McCormick. I took the percent contribution that we use for the solicitor's office, and I use that to calculate the 24,000, what our share would be. I had a conversation with the public defender this afternoon and let her know that any billing would have to designate that any work billed to us had to be isolated to Edgefield County as council had requested during the budget hearing. The opioid grant. So we have established a standalone budget for the opioid settlement, much like an SRO budget, to accept grant revenue and expend it on approved program. We have applied for $245,000 this year from our guaranteed funds twice, and we have been denied twice. After reworking the application, we just resubmitted, and I spoke with the chairman of the review committee today, so I feel good about this submittal. As such, we are leaving the budget worksheet as is for now in the annual budget. I believe we will be funded. A special thank you to the finance committee, the chair, Albert Talbert, Dean Campbell, and finance director Bruce Cooley for organizing the budget and making many edits. I thank you to Taz Potts, who would put these books together for us. Thank you to council for thought-provoking questions and input, and thank you to all elected officials and department heads for your input and your willingness to compromise. A special thank you to our assistant administrator, Hart Clark, for his assistance. And that concludes the budget memo.
All right. Administrator, let me ask you one question before we open it up to council. So based on the report so far, unless you tell me something different, are you going to have any recommended amendments we're going to have to make tonight from your standpoint? Like, as we know, sometimes state government money changes and you have to make amendment, or federal government changes money and we have to make an amendment. Is there anything right now that we need to make an amendment relative to new monies? Money's not coming in, any of that?
There are not, and I don't, as of right now, anticipate any. When it comes to the funding within a department, to choose one position over another, those are things that will be awash as we make those decisions within the budget. Of course, council would be advised of what those decisions were, but the expected revenues and expenditures should not change in the budget.
Just checking. I mean, we have second, third reading too, that they could if necessary.
That's correct.
But I was just checking for first reading.
From what I know right now, they should not.
All right. And council, as we said in the budget workshop, is that at this meeting, we would hear the discussion again on the budget memo, and now we've heard that. So at this point, now we're up to the point where we're just going to discuss whatever you want to discuss that's in the budget. And once we finish discussion, we'll give a first reading. So I'll open it up to council for whatever you want to discuss.
I have a question with the countywide. I think I did hear it correctly. On countywide, the insurance group insurance. You said will increase from, you said due to the additional of, did you say two new employees or?
That is correct. We anticipate adding an employee to the sheriff's office and adding one to recreation. That accounts for part of the projected increase, and the rest of it is simply that the state advises us that there will be a 7.5% increase for everyone. And that is the county portion, the county responsibility for health insurance for our employees.
But for clarification, though, this budget would still pay for all employee benefits, right? Like we've been doing?
Yes, it pays for all individual employee benefits. 100%. We do not pay 100% of family coverage or spousal coverage. Yes.
Okay.
If you are an employee that only enrolls yourself in health insurance, it's covered 100%. You have no premiums.
Thank you.
Counsel? I've got a couple of questions and comments. And first of all, I'd just like to set out, the 16.25 is a lot, and I don't know how many people know the history of the county and how this came about, but it started years ago, two administrators ago, not David, not the one before him, but the one before him. And Dean was not the chairman at the time. And, you know, we extinguished a lot of growth, and if you don't keep up the growth, you wind up like we are tonight, asking for a lot at one time. We don't really want to, but it's a necessity. Garrett's got a job to do. Sheriff's got a job to do, but my previous councils and administrators not looking at what was going on then and planning for growth, here we are stuck with 16.25 mil at one time. So based on that, and I think I know the answer to this, but exactly where is the building going to go? That's been asked to me. I know we're talking about the industrial park, but...
We would like for it to go in the vicinity of the industrial park. I would like for it to go in front of Generac or very close to Generac. But that is based on our study that we had Mosley do, the council approved. That is the area where it needs to go, so we aren't committed to one parcel, but within a half-mile area is where it would go.
Another thing is, these industries that have the fee in lieu of taxes, are they going to be participating in this 16.25? Are they locked in at what they're locked in at, or we get anything extra from them?
So if you are speaking about FLO and group agreements, fee in lieu of taxes, when an industry signs a FLO agreement, they are locked in at the millage rate that is current at the time. If council approves this, and this is approved in September, when the new millage rate is approved, and another industry comes and a FLO agreement is signed, it will be locked in at the new millage at the time. And that is an economic development, industrial recruitment tool. Honestly, it takes uncertainty out of a move of industry into the area. But they do pay, they do pay a lot in tax revenue. A fee in lieu of taxes agreement, for all intents and purposes, takes their effective rate of 10.5% down to about 6%, which is what any other business in the county pays. And the reason this economic development tool, and I hate to ramble on, but it's sort of complex, but the reason we have this tool is to eliminate the 10.5% rate on industry. That would take a revision that requires, I think, a two-thirds vote in the assembly. So the solution to that is, they gave us these tools to allow industry to ultimately pay what any other business in the county pays. It makes it an effective 6% rate. But yes, any new FLO agreement would take in the new tax rate. But any existing one is locked in for the term that they locked in. And we have industries that will come off, you know, at a certain time.
Okay. My next one is, we all know, and Garrett mentioned this, we're not going to go out tomorrow and hire eight new employees. So with the 12.5, we're going to have a surplus for maybe a year or two of money coming in that's not really going to be spent. Can we transfer any surplus from the EMS operations to the building side?
I think to answer that honestly is we'll have to see how revenue comes in, but we are in the hole so far.
Right.
That it will take a while to come into the positive and start building the surplus. So we won't initially start with the surplus. And honestly, I believe that if we increase millage, then we need to benefit the citizens immediately, so we do need to increase and improve service very quickly. You are correct. No eight employees for a 24-hour ambulance immediately because we don't have any place to house those employees at night, but certainly we should quickly add a 12-hour daytime ambulance and a crew and overcome the surplus. So the timing of that is a little tricky. We'll have to monitor it. But I will tell you, the bulk of these tax revenues come in in December, January, and February. So when we, or if council passes this budget as approved and they pass a new millage, we won't start collecting that money immediately. And then on the vehicle side, we would not start collecting it until January. So there will be six months before that takes effect for vehicle taxes.
And my last comment or question is, was asked, District Five and a little bit of District Two pay 47% of the tax base in this county. And I don't see an ambulance, an extra ambulance coming down my way. Is that in the plans, Garrett? Mayor Blay's going to get two? Okay. That's all I need to know. Thank you all.
Go ahead, sorry.
I have a comment, and I would like to say thanks to our county administrator and vice-monstrator and Bruce Cooley for working on this finance committee along with me. I don't have any question, anything to say at this time, but we work hard on this budget, and I definitely want to appreciate everybody that participated here. So at this time, I do recommend that we go ahead and pass the first reading, and we can take that further step. That's all I have.
Dean? Thank you. Let me just call on Ms. Ireland, because obviously she's not here, she can't just jump in, but she can, but do you have any comments or questions on the budget, Ms. Ireland?
I don't believe I do at this time. I thank y'all for the comments that were made.
Okay. Thank you. I just have one comment, and that would be on the EMS side. While I agree with Mr. Moody, it's a mouthful to have 16.25 mils at any time. But I will say this, because I know people kind of lose perspective. So five years ago, people were paying 19 mils more than they're paying today. So a 16.25 increase in 2025 means people are still paying less in taxes than they were in 2020, because they were paying 19 mils. 19 mils have come off the books. 16.25 is going back on. So just as perspective, this is not, you know, this is still less than five years ago in what people were paying in taxes, if you apples-to-apples comparison without inflation or anything. The other thing is, by doing this the way council is doing it, as in 16.25 mils for EMS, in the, as a specific EMS millage, as opposed to putting 16.25 mils into the general fund, what we're doing is making ourselves transparent. Everybody can see where every nickel goes relative to EMS work, and they can follow it, and they can see it, and nothing is hidden. So it's the most transparent way that we can do this so that everybody can understand and see where it goes with... and see where it goes without any trouble in the future as this comes through. So I just want to make those two points tonight. I'll ask, are there any other questions or comments from council?
Have none.
Okay, hearing none. Then is there a motion to give approval of first reading of ordinance number 2425007?
So moved, Jim.
And Mr. Talbert makes the motion, and I'll go ahead and second it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? And Ms. Ireland, what is your vote?
I vote in the affirmative.
And with her affirmative vote, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Next on the agenda is public comments, and I think we have one person who has signed While she is, the clerk is getting the list, I'll remind our speaker or speakers that there's a five-minute time limit on all speakers, and the clerk will tell you when you hit four minutes and five minutes. Thank you. So we only have one person who has signed up tonight, and that's Jacqueline Simpkins. So I'll ask her to come up to the podium, please, and talk to us.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come before you and share some information about the Jonathan Foundation. I am Jacqueline Simpkins, the mother of the late Jonathan Simpkins, who was an electrical engineering student at South Carolina State University when his life was tragically taken on September 18, 1998. Jonathan was an outstanding student and citizen from Edgefield. From this, the Jonathan Foundation was begun by his family to honor him and to provide access to life-changing and positive experiences and programs for other youth as they attend a camp of their choice. So far, the Jonathan Foundation has provided opportunities for over 1,000 youth in the CSRA area. And on behalf of his brothers in their absence, Reggie Simpkins, Kalinsky Simpkins, Terrence Cheetum, who was co-founders of the foundation, we'd like to invite the county administrator, Mr. David Caddell and his staff, and the Edgefield County Council chairman, Mr. Dean Campbell, and your staff to our events that we will have April the 25th and April the 26th. I think each one of you have a flyer, and if not, I do have some extras. We would like for you to just come out and observe what the foundation is doing in Edgefield County. And approximately 500 people will be attending this event between Friday and Saturday. And while in the area, they'll be visiting the restaurants in the town, in the county. They will be staying at the hotel, these are the people that will be attending the events, and they'll be patronizing the stores in the area. So this is how the foundation will be giving back to the county. And in June, the 20th and the 22nd, we'll have a Be the Change Leadership Camp, which will be held at Camp Long. And I know everybody in here have heard about Camp Long in Aiken. A lot of youth from Edgefield County attends that camp, and these will be youth from Edgefield County that will be attending the camp. And with the fundraisers that we're having on the 25th and the 26th, this is how these young people go to the camp, by the golf tournament and the fundraiser at the shooting complex. But we just wanted you all to come out and see what we're doing in Edgefield County, trying to give back to the county. And we all are from Edgefield County, been here all of our lives, all of them, they're brothers and everybody, and we do appreciate what you do for the county. Thank you so much for letting me just briefly speak on what we're doing and just be in prayer for us as we go through next weekend with our event and then the camp in June. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, council, there was no one else who signed up for the second public comment period, so I will close that section and move on to reports from county council members. Do any county council members have a report tonight?
Yes, I do. Just a reminder that March for Parks, Earth Day, this coming Saturday, April the 19th, starting at 10:00 a.m. to...
Then, thank you, I'll turn it over to the county administrator for his report.
Thank you. So in your notebooks, you should have our summer camp flyer. If not, they're on the table there. We're excited to have a lot of camps this summer, line dancing, basketball, cheerleading, soccer, arts and crafts, and two outdoor adventure camps. The outdoor camps are in partnership with Clemson 4H. Details and sign-ups are on the county website, and we are having a lot of kids to sign up already. We have been meeting with FEMA on the six damaged or destroyed bridges in the county due to lean. We have reached an agreement for funding the replacement or repair of two or three, is it three now or two bridges?
Let's go with four, but yes.
Okay, so four, how about that?
Three that they have already...
So it's a very complicated process, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to commend staff for sticking with the federal requirements and all the documentation and everything that has to be pulled together to request reimbursement from FEMA. We do have a great FEMA representative helping us, so that has made it go well. So we have also submitted for reimbursement for all other response costs due to the storm, including salaries, fuel, equipment, supplies. So Doc, Jenny Wall, Foster Crowder, Bruce Cooley, and Leann have worked very hard to meet all of FEMA's documentation requirements and to get everything submitted, and I think we have everything in order for that, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the administrator?
So just one thing with the FEMA report, special thanks to Foster and Jenny. They have both spent just abnormal amount of time working on that. I mean, to the point of going on GIS and finding latitude and longitude for every single pipe that had to get replaced during the hurricane. I mean, it's been an extreme thing. The other thing, just for y'all's information, I have hired a new code enforcement officer. He'll be coming on next week. Once he gets here, of course, I have to file that with the Criminal Justice Academy, and once I submit that, I'm sure there'll be 50 other pages of paperwork that come from that paperwork. So it takes a while to get all that stuff sorted out, and then got to get him with the sheriff and get him set up with all of his equipment and all that sort of stuff. So it'll still take a couple of weeks for him to really get going, but we have hired someone, and so probably sometime between now and your next meeting, you should expect a pretty lengthy report on all of that.
Would you like to go ahead and tell us who that person is, since you've already hired them?
So Larry Callahan, Jr., he's a current code enforcement officer that works in Aiken County, and he is moving from Aiken County to here.
Good, that's somebody with some experience. Questions from council? Comments? Any of that? All right, then we'll go to my comments. First, I did want to recognize Al, Al Jenkins. It is Jenkins. I think I just had a brain hiccup from Senator Scott's office. Thank you for being here. If you know, he comes here occasionally, and we appreciate every time you come here. So thank you very much. Send the senator our best. And council, I appreciate all of us digging into this budget tonight to try to make it work for everyone. The budget is arguably the most important item we take up each year, and I'm thankful that all of us work to bring citizens and employees the best budget forward that we can, so thank you. I also appreciate our staff turning their attention to getting our vacant buildings remodeled for future use. This project is extremely important as we try to create office space that's good for employees and convenient for citizens, and I wonder everyone to know that these renovations represent a real upgrade in buildings for our employees that may not be on everybody's radar. It's not a law enforcement center, but it is important, and it is a result, it's a positive domino effect from the law enforcement center. Now we have buildings that we can renovate, and we can have expanded room for a lot of different departments now that have needed it. So I appreciate staff doing that. That's, again, something I think is important for our employees and citizens, but also something that is not necessarily something that you see as quickly if you're a citizen, maybe. With that, council, there being no further business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Moody makes the motion, Mr. Talbert second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Ireland, how do you vote?
I vote in the affirmative.
And with that affirmative vote, the motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you to everyone.